To the flag of the United States. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Dr. Kena is here. Ms. Westbrook is here. Dr. Mahoney. Ms. Fisher. Here. You have the case.
Now, let's go to our discussion titles. We'll move on to the reports of the committee. Ms. Fisher, this question.
Yes, Madam President. We have one resolution. A resolution to purchase district general liability property in an amber ring. Need employment practice, boiler and machinery, crime and umbrella insurance as proposed by the Ohio State's Council. I will be adopted as a resolution.
And our second. The group then seconded that we allow the resolution to purchase district general liability property in an amber ring, complete the boiler, blockage, water and machinery, crime and umbrella insurance as proposed by the Ohio State's Council. Question or discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Ms. Courtney, I would just like to know if you have any other additions to say about this?
No, this is just, you know, insurance as a state such as district needs. And this actually means that it would be checked at large and tight. It had written in the digest, you know, supporting the increase.
Yeah, we did review the digest. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions on the subject? We call roll these.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook? Yes. Dr. Kena?
Yes.
Ms. Avery Crease? Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Madam. This is my part. Thank you. Let's go to the merger issues and discussion of legal aspects. Now, I'm sorry. Let me ask one thing. I received an email from Ms. Noah. And she respectfully requested our Board of Education to allow me to extend overtime to my secretary Felicity's and to the payroll clerk, Rosalind Moore, as we work to close the fiscal year, close out state and federal grants, and process the abundance of payables for the start of the 2015-2016 school year. So I'd like some discussion on it and whether or not to just get the ballot. Do I need to run a executive session for that?
No.
Any questions or discussion?
My only question would be, and I don't see anyone here to represent us, but I'll be, how much overtime they need? What are they behind in? You know, how do we come up with that?
Okay. I think she said that when she says to close out the fiscal year, to maintain the grants, to process the payables so that they start in 2015-16 school year.
I wonder how much overtime they're asking for.
There's nothing to put a limit on here. I can't believe that they need to, because it's fine to send them to their old town.
I think it's fair to picture that this is not, that we have to approve the overtime. It's almost a matter of life and death for going to ditch, you know? I didn't know not to, but I think I would have to.
Okay. Ms. Westbrook? The other thing is, you know? Okay. Any other questions? Let's all make a motion then.
I knew that Ms. Noah allowed extended overtime. Her secretary Felicity's entered the payroll clerk, Rosalind Moore. They are wanting to close the fiscal year, and they need to close that state and federal grants in order to process the abundance of payables for start of 2015-2016 school year. Requesting.
Okay, I'm second. I second the motion. I could be like that. It's the move then seconded that we allow Ms. Noah to offer overtime to Rosalind Moore and Felicity's so that they can close out the fiscal year and be ready for the overtime. Questions, discussion?
No, I said I didn't have anything. Again, I wonder how, will there be a limit on overtime? Will this just be, just?
Well, I'd like for someone to make the limit. You asked the question, you don't want to say it.
Yes, yes, yes.
And how would you decide a limit?
I could not decide. I don't know what to do. It takes some time to take a look over what we have to do.
My other question, Madam President, would be, and I don't know if Ms. Courtney has a very quickly answered, what is the deadline on most favorite spending that you have?
Now, again, you have also this.
What's the question?
The deadlines that we have to do in order to be able to close out fiscal year and be ready for 2015-16. Okay, so could we say, could we limit it by saying until the end of July? Until the end of August? July? Okay. We do amend the motion.
I knew the motion that the overtime should be granted until the end of July.
Okay, I second it. So I'll second the motion. Now, any other questions? But we repeat the motions if you have. You have, okay, call roll.
Ms. Avery Crease? Yes. Dr. Kena?
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook says yes. And Ms. Fisher, yes.
The motion passes. Now, we can move on to merger issues and discussion of legal aspects. As you come forward, please. Dr. Aaron? I'll turn it over now to Mark Jackson. Mark Jackson, attorney, and Donna Edwards out.
All right. I'm going to pass out, I've got two handouts here. One is the legal opinion that was written and signed by Donna, as well as a shortened outline that has basically the statutory process that we're looking at here to provide guidance on. The legal opinion itself provides a little more detail with regard to strategizing through the process and guidance, in addition to just the statutory language that we forget. And everybody gets, everybody's got two.
Um, you got the extra, because I bought mine. She sent me the town with this.
You have both, yes. All right. Let's start with the, the one that's more of the outlined structure. It will say introduction at the top. This is, there is, under Ohio law, both the municipal annexation law that would apply, which is embodied in chapter 709 of the revised code. And there is also a section under the Ohio School Law Statute and under 3311. So I'm going to go through first the municipal annexation part of the process. And this is, basically, the city of East Cleveland would be the one that would initiate this process, and they would determine whether they want to include the school district as part of an annexation at the outset. There is also, when it comes to territorial transfer of schools, some default aspects that would happen that don't apply to the East Cleveland School District. So we have to look at the state Board of Education approval at the end of this process. So the initial outset is, based upon reports that we've heard, that it looks like there's a possibility of bankruptcy as well as annexation, as what the auditor of state is going to recommend. They were expecting, I guess from reports from the newspaper, an August 28th or so deadline when they were going to issue their recommendations to the city of East Cleveland as to what would be the best way to go forward financially. If they take the recommendation to annex or to start the annexation process into the city of Cleveland, that would go through chapter 709. So the first step is, East Cleveland City Council would have to pass an ordinance declaring its desire to be annexed into the city of Cleveland. That ordinance must appoint or specify three commissioners for the city of East Cleveland that would sit on their committee to determine whatever the terms of the transfer or annexation would be. The ordinance must also declare whether annexation, whether they're going to seek the annexation for just the city, or if they're going to seek annexation for the city and the school district to be included in that, in those discussions. So that is the initial outset, whether they have to make a determination, will we pursue just the city only, or if the school district should also be included in these discussions for ultimately the decision whether it should be annexed or not.
But we ask for it to be.
Certainly. Yep.
The council, they're the only people who can say this? The mayor cannot do it?
The mayor likely will have input, and the mayor could be one of these three commissioners appointed by the city council.
But the council.
But it's the council that has the authority to appoint whoever they want to have on their committee. They will have three representatives, the city of Cleveland would have three representatives. If they decide that they're going to incorporate the school district also to be considered for this annexation purpose, then the city of East Cleveland has to notify the Board of Education here, and you would have the opportunity to appoint a three-person commission as well to negotiate with the city of Cleveland, Board of Education. Now, this is a statutorily mandated negotiation. That doesn't mean that when you go into negotiation, you say, we believe it's not the best interest of this school district to maintain its independence and believe for the best interest of the students, that that's the position you can take. So that is also an option through these negotiations, as well as talking to the community and determining whether they feel it is important to stay independent as a school district rather than being incorporated into the city of metropolitan school district.
Chris Jackson?
Sir.
To my knowledge, I believe there's a commission that has been set up, and do you have any information on that?
I do not, because that's not the formal process that I'm, that we're looking at right now. I believe that's an informal, non-statutory commission, and they're looking at all of their options at this point. I believe there are other options on the table that they could potentially pursue. Such as, you know, there's a bankruptcy, it's state, we can also stay the course and try to cut back. I know they've made as many cuts as they can, and they feel, but certainly that could be an option as well. They've also looked at informally what this annexation process would be. So, you know, they could have other things that they're looking at as well. But, you know, from that perspective, I don't know anything further than the informal process.
I think it's a study committee commission. It's not part of this.
Okay. So moving to page two of the outline, under bullet point number three and four, there's a school district negotiation aspect, there's also a municipal aspect for negotiation. So as I mentioned, if the Board of Education receives notice that the city of East Cleveland would like to include the East Cleveland school district in this consideration for annexation, then there will be a three, you will have the discretion to appoint three commissioners for your committee, as well as the Cleveland school district. And also as well, at the end of that process, there's, you have 30 days to appoint, then there's 15 days you have to get this committee together to make these discussions occur. The results of whatever that is has to be reported back to the Board of Education here, as well as the Cleveland Municipal School District would have their commission to report back their findings to them. This ultimately goes to the community at large, the electors, to make a determination as to whether they feel the East Cleveland school district should be included in the annexation. And the annexation vote is separated. There's going to be the school district issue, as well as the city municipal issue for annexation purposes. And under statute, they have to be divided separately. So in theory, you could have the community say, we feel it would be best for municipal annexation to occur, but not for the school district to also remain independent. So that is one ultimate outcome of this situation. Concurrently with the school district negotiation, the municipal negotiation must occur. They have to determine what the terms of the annexation would be. All of those terms of the annexation must be put in writing, published, as well as distributed to every community member that is on the registered rolls for voting purposes. So they have to physically mail a copy of whatever those terms are to everybody in the community. The school district, under the law, also has the authority and ability to distribute flyers and reports to the community as well. So the ultimate outcome, whatever you determine, you can also communicate with the potential electors in the city of East Cleveland and say, this is what our position is, and why it would be good or bad for annexation as well. So that is also another aspect of this that isn't necessarily statutory, but it's within your discretion as the Board of Education to communicate with the community, aside from just meetings here, to put together literature sent out amongst the community. Once the municipal negotiation is finished, there has to be a vote at the next primary or regular election that has to occur within 90 days after whatever these terms are that are made in regard to the annexation. That would go first to the East Cleveland voters. If that's approved, the city of Cleveland, city council, can say, well, we're going to waive, if it's a yes vote, that East Cleveland's going to be annexed into the city of Cleveland. Then the city of Cleveland council has the authority to waive any vote from the Cleveland, from the city of Cleveland. But then that can also be subject to referendum, where they get petitions for 25% of their voters saying, we want to vote on this. Then that would go then another, to the next election thereafter, for the city of Cleveland itself to vote and approve the annexation. So basically, both sides have to vote if the electors wish for the vote to occur. So it has to be approved from both sides for annexation to occur.
Really proud of Cameron's, because now we're working on doing downside. Oh, totally doing downside in school, in the next school, in that, in the next session. And become independent.
If you, well, you would, you would remain, you would have, and this occurs in a lot of communities. There is a larger municipality, and us as a firm have even dealt with this. There is a community where there's a city, but it's a large city, and it has two school districts that either, the whole municipality is two school districts, or it's one and a portion of another, which would be, here, for instance, I meant, there's a certain section of Cleveland Heights, and that would, it's incorporated into your school district. And that would be something to be taken into account when we would propose this to the state Board of Education. Their ultimate approval is, what happens because if the entire East Cleveland city school district gets annexed, but it's only a portion of East Cleveland schools that resides in East Cleveland, what happens to that little portion of Cleveland Heights? Are they left out on their own, but on an island? Is Cleveland Heights going to take over that small portion as well? So there's ultimate issues, but you would still receive, if you remain an independent school district, yet East Cleveland is incorporated into the city of Cleveland, you would still maintain your tax base, you would still maintain virtually everything that you're running here independently. You would still have your board. It wouldn't really change anything if the city of East Cleveland decides to go into Cleveland, but East Cleveland schools remain independent. Your boarders would remain the same, your student attendance would remain the same, you would still have enrollment and all those things you currently have. You'd have all that same destruction you would have as an independent school, because you run as your own political subdivision separately from that city government.
I thought. Go ahead. I thought if, if, um, East Cleveland is annexed and merged with Cleveland, the property tax will go to the city, whoever had it, Cleveland. And so that's saying that school now, being independent, will not receive property taxes from Cleveland.
It's my understanding that the school district property taxes that you currently receive are still being received from, from your, as the school district, you would still have your same portion. There's a portion that the city receives, that the city of East Cleveland receives, and the city of Cleveland would now receive that amount, but they wouldn't receive your amount, is my understanding.
You know, when you fill out your taxes, and you're, you've got the number designation for the school district? That's how we pull those funds out.
But it's.
That's, I mean, just from that perspective, and then some of the other ways, you have it, you have it pre-coded, still pre-coded for money purposes. So the money that used to go to the city out of local budgets would go to the city of Cleveland. All the money earmarked for the school district would still stay, still stay here.
I noticed in the first report, he said, he said that through the news, the news reports about the potential annexation, Cleveland Mayor Frank Jackson has commented that the city of Cleveland would not be willing to annex the city of East Cleveland unless the East Cleveland city school district was approved in part. So that would have a big effect on whether or not the merger would happen.
Correct. So I think that they would, when they're looking to propose this annexation, the city of Cleveland may say, well, we're not at all interested if the school district isn't on board. So you would have, you would make that determination whether you want to consent to this or, you know, publicly.
Why do you think that, why, why do you think like that? Just.
I know. Because you already have the buildings. He wants your buildings.
Yes, beautiful.
He wants your programs. I mean, there are so many things that go on here on a, you know, I mean, really, you guys are a small school. So he wants that gem for his, for his district.
In the overall, see, see, they're, you know, what all the kids out here do this, this work. That's my thought, too, that, I don't believe the dollars, who gets money from dollars?
Well, he gets the additional ATM. Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Then they also have more students than they have in service as well, so, you know, whatever that would be. So that's the, let's move on to the, that's the municipal process. Now, if we look, there's a certain section of the, the school code itself under chapter 33, that basically outlines the way the state Board of Education would handle this. The general rule is, if you were a school district and your entire school district was encompassed in the city of East Cleveland, and the city of East Cleveland wanted to just go ahead and jump into the city of Cleveland, if all of your territory was in East Cleveland, then you would have no say whatsoever in annexation. They could go on their own, and you would be automatically have your territory transferred into the Cleveland Municipal School District, and this board would cease to exist, your control would cease to exist. But since you have that portion that remains in Cleveland Heights, you're, you're a district that will be affected by any sort of transfer. So.
I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
If all of this, if your entire school district was in East Cleveland, in the city, and you didn't have the Cleveland Heights portion, the entire, the Caledonia, the Caledonia area, you would cease to exist. They, they wouldn't have to get you on board, they wouldn't need your consent or anything. They could just say, you're coming along, and we're going to run the show.
And that's only because of one school?
That's only because.
One school is in Cleveland Heights.
If, if, if everybody that was in this district attended, or all lived in East Cleveland, then you would have that discretion. Now, since you have the Caledonia portion, that's actually part of the Cleveland Heights municipality, then the state Board of Education would have to look at, it gets to look at that, and you also have control to determine how that would, how that negotiation would occur. You have the discretion to say, well, this is what's in the best interest of children. So there is a portion of the code that says, well, if there's an annexation agreement reached under the first half that we just talked about. If during this process that you appointed three commissioners, and you come up with an annexation agreement, and this is what we've all agreed to, that would control, period, subject to state Board of Education approval. If no agreement is reached at that level, then you are again required to negotiate. But there is, this is much more ambiguous under the school law code of the Ohio Revised Code. And I don't know why that is, if the legislature just threw this together, or what the possibilities are. But anyways, we have to negotiate again. The Cleveland school district is also classified as an urban school district. So there's a statement in the law that says, unless, if, if Cleveland does not wish to negotiate, the Cleveland Municipal School District, then within 90 days, the annexed territory that's to be transferred will transfer automatically. That being said, there's also a statement in the law that contradicts that, that says all, all annexations must be subject to state Board of Education approval. So we're kind of in a gray area under the law, but that doesn't mean that we would obviously advocate that state Board of Education must approve it. They have determined factors, they have administrative guidelines that must be followed when it comes to approving a transfer of a school district. So that, due to that ambiguity, it would be construed in the favor of the school and our, and our interpretation of the law, that you again would have the authority to go to the state Board of Education to make that determination. Now, if you refer to the opinion letter that was issued to you, there is, on page five first is, at the bottom of that page, the terms that you would consider discussing at these negotiations are listed there. Whether you want to establish a cooperative education program, inter-district payments with regard to revenue sharing, annual payments by the Cleveland school district to the East Cleveland school district, if you would remain independent, these are types of things that could be negotiated in an annexation agreement. If you move to page six, these are the fact, and this is on page six, seven, and continue on to eight, these are the factors that the state Board of Education would look at if it's going to approve or recommend the transfer of the East Cleveland school district territory into the Cleveland Municipal School District. So when we look at these factors. So when we look at these factors, it is on, that's Dr. McRae, yep, on page six and seven and eight, there are 25 factors listed. And they've also noted in the Administrative Code Regulations, the primary consideration in a territory transfer is the ultimate good of the people's concern. So that's, that's primarily the guideline that they will use, but these are all the other things that you would submit briefs or arguments, saying, "This is why we favor our position over the opposing position." And that would be considered by the State Board of Education. They would make a recommendation, whether the transfer would occur or not. And the transfer normally would occur at the beginning of whatever the ensuing school year would be, if you finish out the year, they say the transfer's going to occur at the beginning of the next school year is when the transfer would occur. That is also subject to challenge under the Court of Common Feeds, so it is an administrative decision, so that could ultimately be appealed. So that's the ultimate, looking down the road, if you come to that, if you want to go to court over this, just a, argue.
I shouldn't ask this. I didn't ask you a lot, so... Oh, yeah. Well, I really shouldn't ask you this, but I think, if you are a member of the East Cleveland school, would you rather be independent? Would you prefer to be independent?
I think there's a lot of gray aspects in this school district that I would recommend, and would be my position, that this school district is on the right path, that you're going the right direction, and that would be the way to handle this situation. I would say, keep this board together and continue to serve the community members here, and don't worry about what's going on in the East Cleveland city. They've got their problems around a lot better, grounding financially, and as well as with the students and the programs we have here. And needing to do such a drastic change, and that changes the community, you lose a lot of that, you know, what's holding to a lot of people, what they've known and what they would need with this district board. So I think that's why it would be important to make that decision. Pretty much fight to nail the entire way, to keep your district independent. I think it works a lot better that way than it happened, but it's, it's definitely, so...
Thank you. That's what I think. Thank you. I'm glad you said that, because I think it's gotten to the point that people believe that if Cleveland's having problems, we're having problems, we're not having problems. Any other questions, Attorney Jackson?
No, Madam President, I don't have any questions, but do you think we should allow the public to ask any questions?
Sure.
Because I think they have a mentality that's like they're going to ask us.
Very good. Open it up to the public, who'd like to ask any questions? Attorney Jackson is here. Did you understand what we were saying?
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a statement. I think that if we were to merge with Cleveland, that it would probably open up busing for children, because they'll probably have to bring kids from another side of town to here, and vice versa, probably moving our kids somewhere else. So I would just thoroughly recommend the fight against any way of merging the schools, because I just can't see how that can be great for the neighborhood and the community as a whole.
As his report going to be, as his report going to be accessible, so we can get a copy of it and put it up, so people can see what you're talking about.
He said, "Would it be possible that we have a copy of something like this?" So is that what you, that's what you're saying, Mr. Struthers?
Do you agree?
Uh-huh.
Do you agree?
I would love for him to put it on, put it on like it is. See, Mr. Struthers sometimes kind of goes the other way. But I would like for the people to know what's going on, and what has to be done, because we have a lot of questions about it. But let them know.
Madam President, I hope that we make a motion to make this to that, to this public notice? Or do you think making, to make it public information, so that you can post it?
A motion, I think. I have a problem with that, I don't understand what they're meaning, you know, and we, we have to deal with a lot of this, but they may not understand what they're meaning. I don't know. I have, what, only problem I have is that when we give it to someone, they put it out like, like we put it out. And, 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 I guess I have problems, I'm just going to be honest with you, Mrs. Struthers, I get problems with some of the things you put, like, one person brings their dinner and doesn't eat, stuff like that that's not true.
That has nothing to do with...
And after a while, it gets to the point where...
Has nothing to do with this request.
Wait, let me think. After a while, it gets to the point where we give it to you, but what are you going to do with it? I mean, I'm just asking that question.
It has the public record.
It was not.
How is it a public?
It has the public record, you read it, as soon as you read it out.
This is Attorney Mike.
So it should have been, it should have been read at executive level, session.
Okay, anyway, what I would suggest, though, is that we do an outline, one sort of thing that you did for us, that you, that Mr. Struthers would have to give to us.
And the districts, what?
We put it on the district website. Very good. That's even better.
And then, and then you release it, it would then become public information, but it would become public information when the full document is posted, and not bits and pieces.
We'll, we'll put it on the website, Mrs. Struthers, and again, moving from there. I appreciate you asking that. Any other questions about the merger? Or anything that has to do with the merger? Mr. Jackson?
Not like it's a family, we need to do this, because we're worried about...
We're worried about, I never realized, because Cleveland Heights was a part of our district, that that would have something to kind of hold on back from, saying, "Here, take the city, take the school."
Ask us what's going to happen, and I would tell them, and we'd prove it.
Well, additionally, I think there was a misconception out there, the mayor, that he's going to do this on his own.
Right, right. Well, he's told us a lot of things.
That's, that's not the case. I think that's just a misconception.
Yes.
The council has to pass it.
And then they, we, we hear a lot of rumors, and it's eerie, and people are asking a lot. Thank you. Mr. Jackson, Attorney Jackson, thank you so very much.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? They're such a large audience.
No, thank you, you're welcome.
Look, we have a great audience, thank you. Thank you. So now we'll go to our discussion of a board retreat, and I'm going to turn it over to this Fisher, and I, I, we're going to have this meet one, and she and this West person are going to work, if it's not understood right.
Um, yeah.
Is it a smile, is that true?
Right, of course, of course, yeah, but I was thinking we all would work together on this, and this, like, if I'm working on this, yeah.